All right, good morning. We're calling the Rankin County Board of Supervisors meeting to order at this time. Mr. Craig Slay, would you arrive in the invocation force please, sir?
Father, we're so grateful to gather before you today on this occasion. I want to thank you, Lord, for the reasons that we celebrate the life that you have given to us. I thank you, Father, for those people who take responsibility, who are engaged, Lord, and who want to preserve life. Father, they use the gifts that you have given to them so that they might be of service and have been fit to others. Thank you for those folks, Lord, who serve us as a community. Thank you for a community, Father, in which we live where we can celebrate the ways, the many ways, that we help each other. Father, thank you for the privilege of being able to gather together so that we might consider the actions of government. Father, we might govern ourselves. Father, I thank you that you have given these gentlemen the skills and the abilities to sacrifice their time, energy, talents, and other things, Lord, so that they might serve us. I pray, Father, that you'll give them wisdom and discernment as we conduct the business of the county in Christ's name.
Amen. Thank you, Craig. Okay, at this time, we have public comments of recognition, but we're going to move that back just for a few minutes until we have the family that gets here. We're waiting on a few more people, so we'll move that back just for a few minutes. Well, we'll move on to all business minutes approval for December 31st, 2014, and January 5th, 2015.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Keith. Do I have any questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Got consent agenda items?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Keith. Any questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Mr. John Sullivan, tax assessor.
I just three items today. I had made petitions to change the assessment on the 2014 real and personal property assessment roll.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Item B, petition to adjust 2014 home state exemption supplement roll.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Keith. Questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
And item C, request to rescind August 4th, 2014 board order avoiding the 2012 and 2013 tax sale for PIN number 36068 due to property certifying to the state and didn't sell in the tax sale since it certified.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Keith. Now, what is, can you explain just a little bit on that? What's...
These are the ones that basically slip through the cracks. They go certify to the state and based upon the timing when they issue their certification for it certifying to the state.
Right.
It may have already gone through the tax sale.
Got you.
So you avoid the tax sale.
Okay.
It's a timing thing.
And more of a paperwork, trying to clean up paperwork?
Yes.
Okay. Any more questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, John. Ms. Bridget Herring, purchasing clerk.
Yeah, wanna, go ahead, please. Where?
Uh, let's hold up one second, Ms. Bridget. Yes. I think we've got all the players here.
Yeah.
Okay, at this time, we have the recognition of individuals participating in the rescue of four-year-old Helena White following the accident on Star Road in Rankin County, Mississippi. Sheriff and Craig, are y'all gonna be handling this as far as...
Absolutely. I want the sheriff to join me in this. I see Sheriff has a camera.
Okay.
He's gonna get in position to take the camera, so he'll take picture. We've got a resolution today, Mr. President, and I am pleased to be able to present on behalf of the Board of Supervisors. And at this time, what I'd like to do, I'm gonna run the risk of calling out the names of the individuals that I'd like to come forward at this time. Ms. Sheriff Jackson, would you please step forward and come join us up front here? And you're gonna need to turn and face. Uh, Ms. Jackson and I have already had a conversation this morning about her comfort level, so we welcome you. I know that it's a big crowd here, and so everybody just needs to understand there's a lot of nervousness around here. Ms. Jackson's son Tristan is a college student and needed to be in class today and could not join us, but I do want to mention his name. Harmon Jackson, come forward, please. Mr. Jackson was involved in the rescue efforts. Ms. Jackson's daughter Jessica Dixon is a college student. She's actually at UMC. She is in class today and could not get an excused absence, so we excuse her absence from us today. We thank her for her participation. William Banks, Deputy William Banks, please. I'm sorry. Did I have the wrong name?
That's what we're missing.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Are you coming?
Yes, come forward, William. I apologize, I got that wrong. I've got William Spencer coming up. I had William and Wade mixed up in my head. William Banks involved in the rescue. Noah Cheats, is Noah with us today?
He's got class.
Noah is a, I believe is a college student. Evan Osborne, did Evan make it? Okay. Both of those guys, I know that Evan is at Southern. Am I right? Are they both at Southern?
Noah's at PRC, C and M.
Okay, all right. And so both of those gentlemen just happened to be handy at the moment and jumped in and assisted in the rescue. They're both college students, were not even gonna be here. Deputy Wade Spencer, please step forward. Wade, I apologize, I called you William Banks. William's probably more offended than you are. Fire Chief Aaron Graham, Robin Hood Fire Department. Aaron, come forward. And we're gonna let Aaron stand in for all of the folks that showed up from Robin Hood, of which there were a number. We appreciate very much Robin Hood Fire Department and their assistance in this effort. Is Brett Ishi here this morning? Brett? Come on. Come on, Brett. I didn't see you back there. Brett is the Rankin County Fire Services Coordinator, and Brett was involved in this effort as well. And then we have two paramedics from AMR. We have Jimmy Miller and Todd Shook. I think they were on their way, so thank you gentlemen, come forward. It's a great privilege for me, on behalf of the Board, to be able to recognize these individuals for their effort in the rescue of Helena White. And I'm gonna read this resolution that has been prepared and which will commemorate this recognition. It will also, we will get it signed. We'll also have several copies made so that the individuals who would like a copy of the resolution are gonna be able to be provided. Let me read this resolution commending our Rankin County citizen responders, our Rankin County law enforcement officers and employees, and our medical professionals for extraordinary actions of bravery in responding to the emergency situation on Star Road in Rankin County, Mississippi. Whereas Rankin County, Mississippi is abundantly blessed with citizens who give no thought to their personal safety and well-being whenever there is an emergency situation calling for action. And whereas on the afternoon of December 28th, 2014, following an automobile accident that occurred on Star Road in Rankin County, citizens who lived near the accident scene heeded the call for help and responded to a vehicle that was overturned in the roadside ditch filled with water. In the overturned vehicle was a child, Helena White, age four. Helena was locked into her child seat, submerged in the freezing water, and was unable to free herself. And whereas the Rankin County residents that I have just named here, Sheriff Jackson, Tristan Jackson, Harmon Jackson, Jessica Dixon, William Banks, Noah Cheats, and Evan Osborne, acted with great bravery and heroism by entering the frigid water to free Helena from the vehicle. This group worked together to ultimately free her from the child seat restraints and to administer lifesaving CPR until law enforcement, emergency responders, and the active ambulance personnel were able to arrive on the scene. Whereas Deputy Wade Spencer of the Rankin County Sheriff's Department responded to the scene and administered lifesaving CPR to Helena, and Assistant Chief Aaron Graham of the Robin Hood Fire Department, and Rankin County Fire Services Coordinator Brett Ishi, and the AMR paramedics Jimmy Miller and Todd Shook. And whereas during the course of the rescue effort, numerous additional emergency response personnel arrived on the scene to be available, most notably members of the Robin Hood Fire Department, whose dedication to the safety and protection of Rankin County citizens is noteworthy and greatly appreciated. And whereas the rescue and resuscitation of Helena White is a testimony to the bravery and heroism of all who were involved, and a further testimony to the quality and commitment of the citizens of Rankin County to selfless service to our fellow citizens. It's therefore resolved by the Rankin County Board of Supervisors that the responders identified in this resolution are deserving of high praise and special recognition from the citizens of Rankin County for their extraordinary acts of bravery and heroism in the rescue and resuscitation of Helena White on December 28th, 2014. These individuals have exhibited the highest ideals of citizenship and service to our fellow citizens, and all Rankin County citizens recognize and appreciate the selfless actions of these brave men and women under extremely difficult circumstances. With us today is Helena and her mom, Jessica, and her little brother, whose name I don't know. Trip, okay. Would you stand, please, and come stand in front of Sheriff? And we are so excited, I mean, he goes without saying, we're very excited that at least we are able to celebrate ultimately what was accomplished on that day.
Y'all sit up here.
And it's a great testimony to these individuals.
Yeah, sit right here.
We're really excited. Thank you for coming, Jessica. Thank you for making the effort to come. And so, would you join me in thanking these individuals? Thank you all, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, thank you so much for your work and for your effort and for your service. Thank you for volunteering and sacrificing your own safety so that we might be able to celebrate this little child right here being here with us today.
Stay in there.
Kim and Broome has something he wants to share with everybody from, did something on that. Yes, Don Nguyen, who owns the Sunny's Barbecue, he wants to make sure, he wants to get all y'all together and feed y'all. So, he wasn't able to come today, so he called, and the first one, let y'all know. So after everything's done, if y'all eat me out and we get it all set up, so y'all can go down there and all eat together.
Very great. Thank y'all. Everybody got photos?
I tell you what, Jessica, can you be in the middle and everybody get a little bit tighter around everybody?
Put her in the middle.
I will be too, with all those boogers. Feel like I'm as old as me.
Thank y'all.
Thank you very much, guys. Appreciate y'all.
Guys, I'd just like to say on behalf of the Rankin County Board of Supervisors, thank you so much for the ones that were able to be out there. And you know, we really don't realize how God plays a part in our life, and I can assure you, people were in the right place at the right time, and God has blessed us a beautiful child, and thank you so much for all of the, you know, every piece of the puzzle that came together. So God was definitely in this to make sure that Helena has our life, and there's something in store for Helena. She was saved for a reason. So we appreciate each and every part that you guys play a part in this, and to go on even further, that's what emphasizes even more so in our response, our volunteers out there. You know, I know that you guys were in the perfect place at the perfect time, but we have volunteers out there from the fire department that absolutely just, you know, give up their lives for no pay whatsoever, and we have a ton of volunteer fire departments out there. And it's, you know, it's numerous times that we, you know, it's tragedies like this that brings this community together, and the deputies and everyone, AMR, everyone together that makes us proud to be from Rankin County and a piece of this. But again, without God's helping this, nothing would have happened. So thank y'all very much. So, y'all have a great day. Oh, look at there, here, she's got her. Ms. Lewis has got you a bear. And Ms. Lewis is here every single meeting, so I can assure you, she's part of the bunch here, so. But thank y'all so much again for all your time and your effort, and again, you know, it's times like these, you know, if you see somebody stranded, help them out. That's what we're all about. That's exactly what we're here on this earth for. So thank you guys so much.
Y'all are all welcome to stay if you want, but it's gonna be pretty long.
It is gonna be a little long, so if y'all... Y'all have a great day, okay?
He's a teeny, my grandpa.
Yeah, he was.
Same age.
He did show up, though.
Traffic ban?
Huh? What?
What's a traffic ban?
Actually, I had a death.
Oh.
I couldn't make the visitation, I had to run by the family. I ran by there, got hung up a little long.
Ms. Helena? Ms. Helena?
See y'all there.
Yeah, good seat.
Ms. Helena, thank you very much for being here, baby. Very, very much. We look forward to seeing you in the future for a long time.
I have a granddaughter just your size.
I've got a 10-year-old about your size. Y'all have a great day. If y'all ever need anything, holler back, okay? You bet. Okay. If we've got all the pictures and we've got everyone ready to go, we'll get back to business.
Bid opening?
Yep, we've got bid opening from Ms. Bridget Herring, purchasing clerk.
Yeah, but, boy, you're not here. Did you start putting...
Sheriff, thank you for putting all that together.
Yeah.
You bet.
The last time I looked here...
Y'all ready?
We're ready. Sure.
The first bid opening is for one or more wheel loaders.
I know, this is where it's supposed to be.
The first bid is from Deep South Equipment. Bid price, $158,000. Guaranteed buyback, $90,000.
Deep South. Deep South.
Next bid is from JWH Equipment. Bid price, $134,250. This bid is from Lyle Machinery. Bid price, $149,999. Bids from Mid-South Machinery. Bid price, $145,000. Bid is from Puckett Machinery. Bid price, $157,355. Guaranteed buyback, $110,000.
How much was theirs, $157,355? Okay, thank you.
Nice operating cost of less than $10,000 a year.
This bid is from Scott Equipment. Bid price, $179,988. This bid is from Stribbling Equipment. Bid price, $159,900. Guaranteed buyback, $110,000.
What was the bid price? $159 what?
$900.
$900, okay.
Recommend those be taken under advisement.
Okay, motion. Second.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
The next bids are for one or more wheel loader, I mean motor graders. The first bid, JWH Equipment. Bid price, $217,240. Buyback, $130,344. This bid is from Puckett Machinery. Bid price, $240,451. Sorry, I keep hitting. Bid price, $214,900 from Stribbling Equipment. Y'all get it? Recommend those be taken under advisement.
The move.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Johnson. Questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Final bids are for one or more tandem dump trucks.
Do we specify which model we want?
Do we?
On the, like, not this, but the last one.
On the specs?
Yeah.
No, you can't specify a model. You just have to compare it to, you can say equivalent to a certain model, but you can't write out specific specs for a machine.
I don't know much about, you know, motor graders and wheel loaders, so...
The first bid for the tandem dump trucks is from Empire Truck Sales. The bid price is $114,805, and they did not get the guaranteed buyback price.
So what would that go down as, a zero, or how does that...
They didn't meet specs, they're required to get that. The next bid is from Truck Works.
Truck Works?
Truck Works. Kenworth, the bid price, $113,016.88, and they did not bid a buyback, so. They've listed out the side options for different things, but it should've been included, but This is the first bid from Tri-State. This bid is for a Mack. Bid price, $123,248. Thirty-six month buyback, $59,500.
Bid price was what, exactly?
$123,248. This bid is also from Tri-State Truck Center. It's for an international. Bid price, $112,546.66. Guaranteed buyback at 36 months, $50,000. They noted exceptions to the specs on the CFM air compressor, the size of that, one-piece windshield, and then the tire size is a different size than what's in the specs.
You said that was an international?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Recommend those be taken under advisement.
The move.
And motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop. Questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Bridget. Mr. Charles Parker, county consulting engineer. I see you got put on the agenda today, Mr. Parker.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I have two items on the agenda, the first being Greenfield Crossing, Part One. This morning, I'm recommending approval of the final plat, and we have a letter of credit in the amount of $55,518.90.
Make motion approve.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by myself. Any questions?
Is this more of the extension of the one that's already started out there?
This is part of Greenfield Station.
Correct.
Yes.
Any more questions? So everything is all in, all in order?
Yes, sir. With respect to this particular part, I found out yesterday afternoon that their surveyor had made a bust on some pins.
Okay.
Didn't take the overall appearance of the plat, but it's some adjustments will have to be made.
Okay.
So I told them that I would recommend the plat this morning, and I just will not sign the plat myself until those corrections have been made.
Okay, so do we need to make that an exception to the...
If you'd like to.
To the motion?
When, what size? Okay. What size homes are these gonna be?
These are, what size was he recommended on this one? Because they were supposed to be moving up in the sizes.
I don't remember yet. They was getting larger, yes. And this portion is right, if you go in, you know, there's a roundabout up that close once you get into actually the development, and this is one section right off that roundabout about on the north side.
Okay. Jared, would you be okay with revising that, too?
Sure.
Okay.
Pending...
Pending busters.
You're getting this... Proper paperwork signed.
Sure.
The surveys.
Okay. I'll make that second, that after their revision, so. Any more questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you. The second item I have on the agenda is our Highway 49 drainage improvements. I'm recommending approval of pay request number six to Thorn Construction Incorporated, in the amount of thirty-one thousand, eighty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents, and requesting authority to issue that check.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop. Questions?
Yeah, aren't they pretty much getting pretty close to the end?
Yes, sir. The pipes have been replaced. Basically, one item left, which is putting asphalt back over, asphalt base back over the pipes. And actually, after we added these other pipes, we're still a little bit under our contract price. I suspect when we get the asphalt base in there, it will kick over a little bit, but very little. Not nearly as much as I had informed y'all earlier that it could come.
Okay.
Yes, sir, that's your question, it's, it's close.
I thought it was, I knew they were working on that last one.
Yes.
Here the other day.
Okay. Any more questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Buster. Mr. Craig Slay, board attorney. Craig, I think Ms. Renee has something for you.
Just, just a few important items.
Just a couple.
It's okay, I would've winged it somehow, I think I'd have been okay. Looks like we made, I'm making up for our short meeting on January the fifth. If you look at my portion of the agenda here, there's several items. I, I would like to take items A, B, and C, Mr. President, with your indulgence, together, since those are all setting public hearings for the same date and the same time, January twenty-nine, two thousand and fifteen, at nine AM, for the Jimmy Lindsey nuisance property, District One property, the Alma Taylor nuisance property, District One property, and the Martha Bates Estate nuisance property, which is District Four property. I'd ask for, for one motion on those three.
All right. Got a motion by Mr., got a motion by Mr. Bishop. Second, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Under public hearing, under my section, item A, we need to open a public hearing on the Johnny Rowland conditional use request, Mount Helms Road, District Four property. Mr. Rowland is requesting a conditional use permit to operate a one-hundred percent recyclable tree service business on sixty-four acres located on Mount Helms Road. He also wants to use a portion of the property for a, what's called a corn maze, and a pumpkin patch that would be open to the public. This property is owned RE1. The trees from his tree service business will be the only rubbish that is brought onto the site. It will be used to be separated for both firewood and pulpwood. The remainder will be ground for mulch. No rubbish or debris of any kind will be left on the property. He plans to build a pole barn to park equipment and tractors, and the, uh, well, I don't have to read that right, last part, do that, Renee. We've got a few other issues that we want to address too, as we look at this from a conditional use standpoint. So at this time, we'll open that public hearing, I'll ask, I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the Johnny Rowland conditional use request. Anyone? Mr. President, I don't see anyone. Renee, can I read these conditions here?
That's what he proposes.
Okay. Here are the hours of operation as proposed, Monday through Friday, eight to five. The grinder will, will run, if I understand this, once every three or four months, because it's only his material that's going to be brought in, so it'll be a limited use of the actual grinding operation. And the contracting, he is contracting with a business in Raleigh that's going to come and chip the material. Is that correct? Okay. So those, if, if there are any other conditions, now would be the time to establish those. You've got your hours of operation that seem to me to be reasonable, eight to five, Monday through Friday, so no weekend hours of operation. In, in situations like this, in the past, additional conditions that have been considered are means of ingress and egress. This does not appear to be the type of, of, of planned use that's going to be a significant impact on road. Other conditions that we've had in the past are, Renee, help me out here. We typically will do, you know, setback from the road. We, we will not, obviously, he's already, he's not allowed to have any kind of dumping on site, but we make sure that that's clear.
Is there a condition that he uses, like he said, stated, it will be his materials only brought in?
That's what he said for several years, that's what your plan is, right? Just his own material.
Right.
So we can put that as part of the condition?
That's in the conditional use.
Yes.
What about the sound? Sound?
Over twenty-five hundred feet away, you said, from?
It's, uh, I was reading DQ, they, I recommend fifteen hundred feet from here, it's risky.
And how far away, how far are you, Mr. Rowland?
We're within those towns.
Okay. And you said, how, Craig, how, how often would you be grinding? What's the?
Every three, four months.
Probably every three months.
Every three months or so? Okay.
We're going to have to give enough to breathe.
To start grinding, Craig. Gotcha.
Now, are you going to have firewood? Well, I work Monday through Friday, so why would you not open Saturday?
Of course, firewood, good, forest grinding operations, it would only be Monday through Friday.
Okay. I was looking for firewood. I am always.
Get his number later.
Any, any other conditions, gentlemen? That you can think of?
The, the property, when we went over this before, the, the neighbor was fine with it, right? So, I mean, yeah.
Okay.
All right, at this time, we'll close that public hearing, hearing that there's no opposition here to speak on this matter. It'd be appropriate to take action.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
This time, we'll open the public hearing on the Peoples Construction Corporation conditional use request at one sixty-seven Gully Road. This is, uh, this is District Four property. Peoples Construction Corporation is requesting a conditional use permit to add seven, a seven thousand square foot metal building for Killen Contractors, Inc., at one sixty-seven Gully Road. The building will be used for vehicle storage. It's a twelve-point-nine-six acre parcel, zoned A2. This time, we'll open that public hearing, I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the Peoples Construction Corporation conditional use request. Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition to that matter. We'll close that public hearing. Be appropriate to take action.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Morrison. Questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Next item is the public hearing for the Willie Mae Fleming conditional use request at three thirty-seven Bell Cove, District Three property. We'll open that public hearing. Willie Mae Fleming is requesting a conditional use permit for a nineteen-sixty-nine manufactured home placed on Point Seventy-four acre parcel. It was, it was placed there in two thousand and nine, so we're kind of doing this in reverse here. Property is zoned A2, it requires a minimum lot size of one acre. At this time, I'll ask, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the Willie Mae Fleming conditional use request? Anyone? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition to that matter. We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve this.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Bishop. Questions? John, I want to make sure for the records that you have checked everything out, and everything is to standard, and everything will be set. And this, if I'm not mistaken, this is the one that we showed that is up off the road that will really never be seen that much anyway. Craig, okay, thank you. Okay, any more questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Item D in the public hearing is the action on a request, a written request from the City of Brandon regarding our new GS, GIS mapping data. If you look at Exhibit D, nine D, you will see the written request from the City of Brandon. I want to draw your attention to stipulations that are contained in that letter that are being self-imposed by the city. The data may only be used for in-house project planning. The data may not be used for final planning or project release, and the data may not be released to the public. You will recall, gentlemen, that as it relates to our new GIS mapping data, we are in the testing phase, the, the review phase of that data. It has not been finalized. However, there are entities around us chomping at the bit to get access to the data that we do have. It's close enough in its form that those who are willing to place stipulations on themselves, like Brandon is, are, are being allowed to. This board approved CNPD getting access to this data at the last board meeting. And so this is a, essentially, an identical request from the City of Brandon for that data. So unless you have any further questions about that, your tax assessor's staff and your legal staff has looked at it, and we don't see any issues given the stipulations.
Gotcha. Well, that's pretty much what we exactly, one of the things that were, the reason why we did this, to help out municipalities, if I'm not mistaken, that was going to benefit all of Rankin County.
That was one of the considerations.
That's right.
That everybody in the county would be able to benefit from it.
Correct. Okay.
Well, I'm just asking, is this something that we, is this just a volunteer thing? Or is this something, since we got so much invested, that we share some?
Nope.
How does that work?
I, I don't know that.
I don't know, I'm just asking.
I, I don't know that we've had that conversation.
That was in the discussion, when I mentioned to y'all that everybody's going to want this information, and y'all could set stipulations to share in the cost that you incurred on getting this. And that's something up to y'all.
Well, kind of, I mean, kind of quick, we just kind of got it off the ground, and so we really hadn't had a chance to discuss anything like that. I agree.
It's coming, more and more people are going to ask when they find out we have this data.
Yeah.
And it's going to be engineer companies, electrical companies, municipalities.
Well, I think it's different with municipality versus those others.
Oh, yeah, that's definitely.
Industry than.
Private versus a governmental agency, for sure.
But it is an option.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Well, John, how would it work, though, if we start sharing our data and the updates are not provided? I mean, they're only going to take a snapshot of today, right? Not, we're not going to continue to update going forward?
I don't plan to.
Okay.
No, they, they would have it as of the day.
That day.
They receive the data on all the updates.
Okay.
Now, it'd be totally up to them on what they want to layer on top of our layers.
All right. Okay.
So.
I make a motion to approve?
Motion by Mr. Bishop to approve this.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any more questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Gentlemen, the next item is a, is consideration of and potential action to adopt a resolution of support for the extension of local and private legislation for Rankin County recreational grants. That's item E in your packet, you'll see the resolution, it's unusual for me, I guess, it's about a half page.
You didn't write it, did you?
No, no comments, please. At any rate, the resolution is, is fairly simplistic. It is seeking an extension of a piece of local and private that has a repealer attached to it. This is a piece of local and private that has been around for multiple legislative terms. It authorizes Rankin County, only Rankin County, to expend through the board supervisors, in your discretion, up to a maximum of fifty thousand dollars per year for the purpose of recreational grants that are made available to qualifying entities. Qualifying entities being a pri, a private, nonprofit, qualified, tax-exempt entities. Examples would be ResWar Athletic Association, school, affiliated school entities, such as the B Club for Brandon High School, and, and like entities. And it's for the purpose of, of an enhancement of recreational facilities that provide for youth sport activities to Rankin County youth. If the repealer goes forward, we won't have the authority to expend those funds. So you're being advised that if you would like for that legislation to be extended, that we would need a resolution authorizing you guys to speak your support to that, to the legislature.
And even if we do this, it's still up to each board every year to what budget.
That's correct.
This just gives us the authorization. This does not lock us into having to put it in the budget.
You do not have to spend anything, it simply authorizes you to do so, should you choose to do so.
Right.
That's where it's been being.
Correct.
For eight years, so.
Which is kind of what we did two years ago, whenever we backed it off from fifty thousand, I think, to twenty-five thousand, if I'm not mistaken, whenever we backed it off our budget.
That's correct.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's no different, it's, it's just a, um.
Just an authorization.
Putting it out there.
Right.
In case, yeah.
Okay.
You won't have the ability to do it if, if it's not extended.
Gotcha. Got a motion by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions?
All I'd like to say is it has been, it's been greatly used and greatly appreciated, and the things I know throughout all districts where the, it's been used, are things that the generations will enjoy and appreciate. It's not like a one-time use, it's something that, that's there, that your grandchildren will be able to appreciate what you have.
Exactly, and it's.
What the money went to, to help, whatever it was done. And I know everything that I've, I've used it for will be things that, you know, hundreds of people at this point use it. So if you look at it from a tax dollar perspective, it's nickels.
Right, when it comes.
Compared to the usage of, how many people get to utilize from.
Well, when it comes down to it, it basically, it affects children. I mean, that's what, you know, it directly impacts the, the children and the families. And I know that it's not a, it's a, it's one of those budgetary items that discretionary, where we can use it or not. And I'm like Jared, that, you know, we have used it over the last four to six years, and it has impacted greatly, especially out in the outer lying areas and stuff like that sometimes, so. Been very well received. Any more questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Mr. President, for items F and G, I would like to invite and recognize some distinguished guests.
Mr. Josh Carlisle, who is the city clerk of the City of Flowood, is here with us. Mr. Lem Adams, who is the in-house legal counsel of the City of Flowood. And I've forgotten your name.
Rose. Mayor Rose is here with us today.
Thank you guys for coming. If y'all want to come forward, Mayor, please.
And I'm, I'm asking them to come forward in the event that there are questions about this. I want a ready answer here available. This item, items F and G sort of go together, they, they relate to the exact same project. Today, we're going to be considering and potentially acting on a request from the City of Flowood to, to address a new inter-local agreement between Rankin County and the City of Flowood that will substitute for and replace three existing inter-local agreements between Rankin County and the City of Flowood that relate to what we will call the Dogwood area. Okay? There are three projects involved. One is the Dogwood Festival Market, the Dogwood Promenade, and the Lakeland Commons. These are all TIF projects that go way back before this board. In fact, the Dogwood Festival is a May two thousand project. If I recall correctly, in October two thousand and three is Dogwood Promenade, and in June of two thousand and four is Lakeland Commons. At that time, the board, this board author, or the prior board authorized a, a TIF bond issuance and the pledging of the county's avalorum tax increment to service those bonds, and those construction projects went forward. You know, the rest of the, the story is that those have been very successful economic development projects. And the City of Flowood has the opportunity now to do a refunding of the TIF bonds. And they have chosen to do so by having an issuance of general obligation bonds for the refunding. So this will take it out of the TIF protocol and move it over to a GO. So how, how does that affect the county? Well, we've got existing inter-local agreements that are going to need to be revised or reformed. One particular inter-local is going to be amended. A new inter-local is going to substitute for each of the inter-locals that are in place. And so that's what's before you today, to approve the pursuing or the going forward of Flowood to issue the GO bonds that will, in essence, pay off the existing TIF bonds, but allow for those bonds to be secured in light manner that the TIF bonds are being, that have, have been secured. No change in the security status, of which a part of that is the county's pledge of avalorum revenue. Okay? Okay? So the pledge will remain. The life of the bonds are not changing. Those are the same. The impact, what's the impact to the county? The impact to the county is that there will be, we anticipate, a significant savings because Flowood has been successful in securing a radically reduced interest rate on the GO bond. And so the difference between the TIF bond rate that was issued back in 2000 and 2003 and 2004, with today's interest rates, we're going to be able to realize a significant savings. The anticipated savings over the life, the remaining life of the bonds is, we feel, your staff feels comfortable telling you, it is at least $2 million.
I'll say that's significant.
That's significant. That's a no-brainer.
That's over 10 years?
It will be over the next 10 years, yes, sir.
Nine years.
That's correct. So item one would be the approval by this board of the substitute interlocal agreement that will substitute for the three existing interlocal agreements. The authority of the president to execute that document. It'll be approved by the AG's office and all be done. And then item G is a little bit of a twist on that with respect to the Lakeland Commons interlocal agreement. We are going to be amending that interlocal agreement so that in section seven of the existing agreement, it will allow for the county to, in essence, pay its portion of the avalorum in the amounts that will be the new bonded amount under the GO. Okay? So it's going to be a different payment stream. We need to amend that interlocal so that the county doesn't pay more than it's supposed to, given what we owe under the new interest rate. So those are the two items. We could take those together. Mr. Mayor, do you have any comments? Would you like to say anything?
The only thing I'd like to say is this board and prior boards, thank you for investing in the city of Flowood and also Rankin County. As you can see, the last three years, it's generated over $810,000 over the TIF payments. So these were investments some of y'all were on this board. Jay, I believe you are.
Yes, sir.
But I just want to tell you thank you. It's a job well done. And your efforts are paying off tremendously for the county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's government working together.
We had, a few years ago, we had a snafu because we lowered taxes and ended up short. Are we going to take care of all that now? So all of this, the adjustments to the interlocals, y'all took care of all that? All right.
The actual, and I'm not throwing the numbers out, but the actual savings is going to be 2.9 million for the county and city. So, you know, we were in it together. So we're going to save, the city of Flowood's going to save money also, but anticipate for the county, right, at 2 million.
Good deal.
Thank you so much. Okay.
Items F and G, Mr. President, with your indulgence, we could take those together as one motion.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept this?
So move.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Keith. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Good job, guys.
Mr. President, the next item is item H. I've asked Chad Davidson, who's with the Felston Bar Firm, to be present today to help with the explanation on this particular item. This is, and with your indulgence, I'm just going to present exactly what the resolution says here. So just hang in there with me, okay? We're going to consider and potentially act on a resolution authorizing and approving the form and execution of an agreement as to the term of Series 2013 refunding bond and a second amendment to the tax pledge agreement in connection with the issuance by the city of Pearl on behalf of itself and the county of a $10 million City of Pearl taxable urban renewal revenue refunding bond, Series 2013. That is the Childry Road Urban Renewal Refunding Project. To currently refund the $10 million City of Pearl taxable urban renewal bond, the Childry Road Bond, Series 2004C, originally issued to assist in the development of the Bass Pro Bloomfield Project. Authority of the, and the authority of the board president to execute all required documentation to effect the purposes of the resolution, authority of Rankin County to do all things necessary to carry out the purposes and intent of the resolution to include payment of any obligations, if any, set forth in the tax pledge agreement attached to the resolution and/or all other documents referenced within this resolution.
Oh, yeah. We all understand every bit of that.
Every bit of that. That is, now it's on the record as to what we're acting on. This relates to, as I attempted to explain previously, this relates to the, what we refer to as the Bass Pro Brave Stadium Project. It's not a TIF project. This goes all the way back to the urban renewal bond issuance originally. And from that point, there has been a series of minor adjustments along the way, all of which are reflected in the resolution as to date and time. What you need to know is that under the urban renewal bond project, there were three series of bonds that went with that project that got the construction of the stadium out of the ground and the Bass Pro facility and maybe some additional construction. I don't recall, but these are all, these are all related to the urban renewal project. The numbers on those are fairly significant just by way of recollection. This is not meant to be accurate in any way. Somewhere in the neighborhood of 40 to 50 million dollars of that is what is known as the Series A bonds. Somewhere in the neighborhood of.
Original 43, the big ones were originally 22.
The Bs were 22.5. The Cs are 10 million, which is what's reflected here. What we're talking about today is only the Cs. It's the $10 million part of that. So I wanted to give you an overall concept of the total dollar amounts that have been involved in this bond, urban renewal bond project from day one, so that you understand that we're talking about the C bonds only. There, nothing that we're doing today will affect in any way the A and the B series of the bonds. The county's tax pledge stays the same. What, you know, there are no adjustments to that being requested. What is being requested today comes from the city of Pearl and obviously the holder of the C bonds, which is the developer. And the request is that the city of Pearl and the developer have reached an agreement whereby the city of Pearl can recoup some of its expense related to additional costs associated with the new Bloomfield outlet and also some assistance with respect to the stadium lease that Pearl is obligated on. And so the developer is willing to undertake that arrangement in exchange for an extension of the amount of time that would be available to ultimately pay off the C bonds. Throughout this, the history of this project, correct me if I'm wrong, Chad, there has never been any payment made by any entity against the C bonds. Am I right? The developer has gone unpaid with respect to the C bonds from inception of the sale of those bonds. All right? So the developer's willing to continue to work with Pearl. In exchange, Pearl would like to extend the length of time under the bonds to be able to pay on the Cs, assuming that the avalorum revenue and other revenue that's pledged against that C bond reaches a point where it can be paid. So the commitment is if we get the tax revenue that can fund it, it will eventually be paid to the C bond holders. We need more time to get that done.
So how does, does that put us at risk? I mean, as far as the county at all? I mean, how does that, how does that affect us as far as any kind of risk? As far as putting that out further? And what is that?
I was going to clarify one thing. The avalorum taxes, the only thing pledged towards the C bond, or towards the bonds period, is avalorum tax from the Bass Pro shop. That pledge of avalorum tax really goes to the city. Then the city pledges to the trustee and runs the indenture and so forth. But the pledge of, the county's pledge of avalorum tax that would go to the C bond is, continues to terminate on 2024. The county's pledge is not extend out past into this next, this additional 10 years that we're extending the C bond. So from the county's perspective, there's no additional, there's no extension of your pledge. Your pledge stays exactly the way it is today.
Just to 2024?
And the only reason we're having to act on this today is because we're party to the original deal.
Right. The reagreement, the original reagreement, which has been amended several times. When we amended it in 2012 to refund the Series B bonds, we had to amend the reagreement to allow for refunding. One of the provisions in that amendment said that any refunding, the term of any refunding bonds cannot extend past the term of the bond that's being refunded unless the county and the city expressly agree and writing to do so. So that's what the agreement as to term of the Series 2013 refunding bond agreement is about. Simply acknowledging that we're extending the term your, the county's agreement to. And then the amendment to the tax pledge agreement is essentially the same thing we did in 2012 when we refunded the Series B bonds. It's a substitution of reference to the Series C bond, substituting the Series 2013 bond for the Series C bond so that.
Just the names.
So that pledge runs to the new bond through 2024.
Your original tax pledge agreement will refer back to whatever the, the 2004C, I think, is what it is. That's what would be in the tax pledge agreement. We're going to amend the agreement to simply say it used to be the 2004C, but now it's the 2013. That's all we're doing.
So is that not, does that not just cost, I mean, the county basically is just kind of carrying it a little longer?
The city.
No, we're not actually.
Actually, this is all on the city.
But I mean, we're not getting, we won't get anything back.
Our avalorum revenue that we're getting off of Bass Pro that is right now being funneled to pay a bond issue stops in 2024. That avalorum pledge stops in 2024.
So after that, then, we will.
So we won't be getting anything for 2024 anyway.
Sir.
We would not get any avalorum for 2024.
That pledge is already in place.
No, that's just Bass Pro. Just Bass Pro.
Just Bass Pro. And the city, the city's pledge will extend to 2034. So that the city will, they've already approved that. They've already done that.
So how much, I mean, and this is getting in off into their business, but it also Rankin County. So how much are they receiving as far as benefiting from this? I mean, as far as Pearl?
The city has not gotten a dime out of this.
But I mean, I thought I heard that on the front end, that they will be receiving because of extending this out.
The developer is, has an agreement with Pearl. I don't know the details, but some, some agreed upon amount of money is going to be paid from the developer to Pearl
Right.
in present-day time for the purpose of defraying some of Pearl's additional costs
Right.
associated with police and fire protection and other costs that Pearl is incurring now to cover that. In exchange, the developer is agreeing to do that in exchange for an extension of this period of time under the C bond to get it repaid.
The city's already made the deal with how much avalorum they're going to give up. And they have to meet, I think, $2 million in sales tax before, they weren't going to get anything. But now they're going, if they not done this deal, and correct me if I'm wrong, if they not done this deal, all the money over $2 million would have gone to pay toward the C bond.
The C bond. Would not have received anything back.
Actually, everything over a million dollars.
Was it a million?
Yeah. Which has not been reached to, up until, I'm sure about $2,014. But once, once the sales tax revenues exceed $1 million, first million is the pledge of the As and the B bonds, $2,000. Once it exceeds $1 million, then the sales tax revenues from the urban renewal district site, including Bass Pro and Braves, which are still pledged to the As and the Bs, then that would go to the C bond. Okay? And what, essentially what the developers agreed to do is say, okay, anything over $1 million, we'll give you, we're going to pay you back 50% of that to help you with your additional costs through 2024.
So where's the $2 million coming in at then?
There, well, that was the original count.
Okay.
We, that's been, that was amended in 2010. There was the original $2 million count.
Okay.
But that was taken out in 2010. So once, once the sales tax revenues exceed $1 million, then they, as it stands right now, they all go to the C bond.
All right.
City wouldn't say any other. So the developers agreed to help the city out with these additional costs in exchange for like the hope of being repaid later down the line.
So once a million dollars been reached, then the city would get a percentage of this money?
50%.
50%. Okay.
Okay. Does that throw any tailspin as far as Judy and John's office and everything like that? I mean, does that make it any easier or any harder?
Yeah, they love this.
I'm telling you. I was kind of looking at the face of saying, okay, this.
I think, I think from a logistical standpoint, our folks, Miss Judy has simply been cutting checks, and those go to the city of Pearl.
Right.
It's up to Pearl to, as I understand it, to divvy out from there under the agreements.
Okay.
So where are we in 2024?
We're drawing our avalorum tax increment that would otherwise be paying a bond. That's coming to the county coffers.
24, we start collecting all avalorum for Bass Pro.
I have no idea what that number is, Jared.
Well, after the first 10 years, I think we get the avalorum off the stadium. But then the 20 years was for Bass Pro.
We're going to start getting money about 2024.
15 years, Jay.
2024, that's.
2019.
Right, yeah.
2019 is the A deadline. 2024 is the B and C deadline.
Okay.
So if we're talking, if we're on the right target here, and I'm not sure that we are, but assuming that we are, if the As relates primarily to the stadium, then we will derive that pledge for revenue. It will come to the county and not against the bonds as of 2019.
19?
Yes, sir.
All right. Is everyone clear with LMS?
Well, I at least got updated on where Pearl is, so.
Well, that's what I, yeah, that was, some of my, my main concern was making sure that the county, and you feel good about this, Craig, I guess, Craig and Laura, that we are at no risk whatsoever. We're, we're still solid, whatever LMS.
Nothing really changed.
Our involvement is simply because we were on the document originally, and it requires our written authorization before they can monkey around with the language. That, that's it. It's not affecting us in any way.
Okay.
Well, maybe you should have went first before the $2 million. You know, $2 million was kind of, you know, the show.
That was sweet. I'm here to tell you, that was sweet.
Okay. So we need to approve this?
Yes.
Yeah, the consideration.
Now we can act on it.
All right. I make most approve.
I'll second. Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Keith. Any more questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item I.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor? Mayor Butch Lee is here for items I and J, Mr. President. We have one item, action I, which is a discussion and potential action. This is a repeat from the prior board meeting where we discussed in some terms the City of Brandon request regarding the securing of some additional parcels that are adjacent to our multipurpose facility for the purpose of access that is related to the planned City of Brandon Rankin Trails recreational complex. Did I get that name right? It's complex in there, recreational project facility complex. And so Mayor Lee is here, and I appreciate his being here to address to you their request regarding those properties. And y'all will recall the discussion that we had. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. I'm sure you don't want to sit down and get a bottle of water. Thank you for allowing me to come this morning. I try to be as brief as I can. I've really got three points that I want to work through. And I took those three points and I condensed them into something for you to look at and keep with you. I started to do a PowerPoint, but at the same time, I didn't want you thinking of making decisions on something you had seen. I'd rather you have a hard copy of it somewhere. I spoke to the Rankin County School District yesterday, their board, on some of the things I'm about to discuss here. Some of the things I'm about to discuss, obviously, I didn't talk about the multipurpose property with them. But there are really three items here. I want to talk about a couple of pieces of property out there that I've got some drawings I want to share with you. And I've got one for the engineer as well. And I also want to talk about two other things, streets in downtown Brandon, because I know we're entering a phase where there's a potentiality of some new buildings here in downtown. And I'd like to discuss some ideas that I'd like to share with you and like you to think on. So I'm not asking for action on, on that particular issue, but I've got some drawings I want to give you. And then I want to talk briefly about 471. So with that, I'd like to give you a copy of this.
Okay.
And would ask that you don't peruse through it all, but kind of start with page one there and we'll go from there. Steve? I'll get one more for myself.
So every bit of that is 11 by 17, taking and folding it out. You can see the, uh, multipurpose property, and that's the approximate boundary line. We did get a, and I'll be glad to share that with the county if you'd like it, our, uh, boundary and topo map. Don't mind sharing that with the tax officer at all. We served, I think, we paid $70,000 for it to do it all right. So that is pretty much close to the 32 acres there on that first page that you see, through that arrow, and that's a visual earth map, very current, you can see the new building there. Second one is a map that is a representation off of the topo survey that we did as we began entering the development of this project. All of those lines, I wanna make a special note and put a box on there that you'll see it, those are one-foot elevation lines, uh, which lends to part of the discussion of those three pieces on those corners, A and B. So I'd like to spend a few minutes talking about A and B. Got it working now, sort of semi, almost, you can fold those out a long ways, you're leaving fold.
Nice book here.
Yeah.
Second page, Jared.
I'll wait, uh-
Second page.
You're working off second page, Craig?
That's right. The multipurpose property at the top of the page.
This, uh, the front page you gave us is what y'all have, what you propose-
Oh, I have it.
-after we, if we approve the change, right?
No. This is what you have right now. Current Rank County properties, plus or minus 32 acres.
Yeah. There you go. See if you can figure that one out.
I got, go ahead, Ollie.
We're ready.
Not quite.
Oh.
This is what they want.
Good, Jay?
Yep.
Okay. So the first page is an aerial, uh, Google Earth, and that's approximately the boundary line of existing 32 acres that are there. See the road coming into it, the front parking lot and the parking lot in the back. So the next page is, I took that off of our topo and topo survey, so I want to talk specifically about, uh, A and B separately, so that we don't confuse things. So again, I wanna draw attention to those one-foot elevation lines, because that's the reason why we're having this discussion about A and B to begin with, is the elevation lines. So the next page over is just specifically a blow-up of A itself, and you'll find two pieces, two parcels there that are colored, one's colored red and one's colored green. The red is already City of Brandon property, it's where the fire station is at out there. Also got a water well there. And Region 8, we approached them about, that's actually behind and beside what they call their bus barn. Uh, they were very kind to give this to the project, and we're gonna turn that into a improved surf, uh, parking, asphalt parking lot for an improved trail to go down around those old quarries that are down there. So that's kind of the purpose of that, and what we wanna do is connect that parking lot to the other side of the horse barn, multipurpose building. And that's the purpose of A. If you see that top boundary line, it actually corners, and there's, it's flagged very well out there, you can walk this and see these lines. That, uh, that corner, uh, we don't have enough room to put a road around to get behind the multipurpose building, to get around that corner. Also in A is, uh, you described it as a slough, uh, I call it mosquito hole, it holds water and, you know, west Nile and chicken gaias is a problem, we've had several cases of that over time. So we'd like to drain that and clean up that property right there, and create a road in here. And I've got a representation of that as we go through it. So that, that's talking about A. Are there any questions about A before we go on to the next one?
With the, uh, and where you're saying A is at, are you proposing a road-
Yes.
-through A?
Yes, from that parking lot up front, we'll build a parking lot there and have it gated so we can close it off, and there'll be an access road to get in there, and that access road will actually tee to the right and tee to the left.
Which parking lot are you talking about?
Uh, right at the front of, uh, to the right of the existing entryway into the multipurpose building.
Okay.
Currently, there's a gray rock pile there, interacted with Dale a little bit on that. So we're gonna put a, a, a parking lot there and a drive that goes up in there. This drive I'm envisioning is a kind of a state park, you know, a 15 mile an hour, two-lane road, ultimately is what it'll turn into. We'll build it with, uh, slag first, get that settled down, and in time, we'll put curb and gutter in it and asphalt.
And I wanna make sure, clarify this, Dale, uh, we're not currently using this, this part A at present, never really have, have we, as far as that area? Where's the slough and the, uh-
Not the slough, I don't think we usually use it, it's a little bit out there, market goes for a top pile here.
Right, small area for a-
Shoulder.
Okay. But that other is pretty much unused, correct? Not usable? Gotcha, okay. Just wanna clarify.
We wanna open it up and drain it, clean it up, and, you know, we've got plans to clean up that fire station. That whole appearance out there, since the sheriff has taken over that, cleaned up the multipurpose building, done a wonderful job out there.
Right.
And we wanna complement that whole road to look like that, it's kind of an entryway into the Rankin Trails project.
Okay.
It all kind of fits, that's kind of our idea.
Are you, you know, if you go out there and look where A is, where the flags are, that is very close to where our Christine Road is, only, it's only 10, 12 feet.
We don't wanna, we're not gonna use that line, there'll be a buffer of trees there. What we wanna do is drain that and get a drain out of there to the road so we can get that water out there, and we'll build a road about halfway between that flag and that power line.
So is that, yes, we say where that flags are, I mean, there's no buffer, that's-
No, no, we want a green buffer there.
Okay.
We want trees, we don't wanna take the trees out, we wanna leave them. So we're just trying to get on the left side of that slough, you see, and then we'll clean that slough out and get it drained.
How much, how much buff are you looking at there, Mayor? What, I mean, basically-
10 yards, 15 yards, 20 yards, as much as we can keep.
More, make it more attractive, what you're saying.
Why don't we just get what you need and leave the buffer, let the buffer be part of?
Because we'd like to, uh, get rid of that mosquito hole. Uh, there's used tires in it and everything else, and we're just trying to clean all the property up out there. Plus, we gotta get around the top end, so if you get on the top end and you look at it right in the heart of that, we've gotta have enough to get a road around that to get around to it, and that'll connect to the other side of it. Uh, the top right corner is marked very clearly, as is the corner on the left of that triangle. So you can see, there's quite a bit of elevation that you kinda, kinda come around in there to get around that, that point. And there is an old road there already. Couple of ditches, but we'll, we'll work through that.
Where is, where is the, uh, where is this water hole you want to clean up? I'm trying to-
It's, uh, if you, if you envision taking that A, that box is there, plus the five acres description is there, it comes all the way down almost to the front of the property, right in the center of that triangle.
I guess it's it right here?
So it eats up most of the, most of the front end of that triangle there. Any other thoughts on A before I shift over to B?
No. Well, I don't understand how you're gonna get rid of slough without mopping down all the trees and, and-
Keep it up. Well, it's open on the bottom end, we're gonna bring a drain straight out to the street. It already naturally drains that way.
Yeah.
It actually drains over to the existing, uh, road into the multipurpose building and drains down that ditch now, but it's gotta be dug out about four feet to get that water to come straight on out to the road to keep it dry.
Okay.
It just looks like you-
Or we'll put coverets in the back of it and build a road so that it drains the other way. Either way, you know, we just wanna clean it up.
Okay, but then how you gonna leave the buffer? You talking about a 15-yard buffer?
There's already a, there's already a 10-yard, 15-yard buffer between the edge of the slough and those flags that are out there. And then there's another 10 yards between those flags and the existing, uh, entry into the multipurpose building.
It just looks like, it just looks like you've taken overall what's left of the multipurpose property, and what you've already acquired, and you just found the rest of the lines and shrinking it right down to the existing, just what's left for just it, leaves no, nothing else there, like you're just slowly choking it down, if I was looking at it, I mean, the way it looks to me.
If you're looking at it on linear paper and looking flat, it looks that way. If you go out there and stand on the ground, you couldn't see it, that it's-
Right, I understand, but I'm just saying, the multipurpose property was left right here, this is what was left, other than the property that you've already acquired, okay? It almost appears that, that now we got a little corner here, a little corner here, let's just squeeze it down a little more, and then-
Well, the part on the right isn't as bad as the one on the back, because, you know-
Well, let's get through, if you don't mind, let's get through with A first, and I'll try to answer that question as we get to it, and I've got a representation of the road around both of them to connect the two.
Okay.
So, if we're done with A, you turn the page over and you see the parking lot that we wanted to put behind Region 8, and that road, that's the T, and in that, you can't even see the roadway that comes into the multipurpose building. That's a Google Earth, and you see how far away that is from the existing road that comes in there on the left. Then you see a road that goes all around. Now, the road to the left is gonna go around and connect with the other side of the property. So that's the rendering of that.
And this, this parking lot that you're proposing here, what is that gonna be serving?
It's gonna be serving a walking trail that goes down to the interstate and those water features alongside the interstate, we're gonna clean it up.
That's right, Mayor.
How big a, I mean, I guess how big a parking lot?
That was, uh, four acres all told, I believe, four and a half acres that we got from Region 8 to do that. We'll take some amount of it, it's a big, it's a big rock out there, really, most of it's limestone surface as it is now.
Right.
All right, so I'm over on B now. Jay, should I catch up with us there?
All right.
All right, on the B side, which is the furthest west side of the property, that's 1.2 acres, I believe, there, and I've got another rendering behind this, but the key discussion here is, we've also got the street, we took over the street that goes to Bayou Classic, gonna have gates there, we'll put gates up so people will stop throwing deer carcasses and trash and everything else out there, trying to clean that up a little bit, and when we get a dozer, we're gonna hit the ground and come around the multipurpose building to try to connect to the other side. It's the elevation in here that's the problem. If you look at these elevation lines, you see from that corner down, you drop about 12 feet off the back pad of where the, uh, that long building is for the multipurpose building. So there's a big pile of concrete back there and a drain, and you find two big red dots, and those two big red dots are about 20 feet higher than anything around them, just a big mountain of limestone. And that's the problem. We can't go from the left side of this triangle over there to connect that other parking lot without having to go all the way out to the power line to come back around. Be much easier to go between those two red dots. So it's the elevation that's the problem for us. Plus, we wanna put gates up. We've, uh, had conversations with the board attorney concerning a fence around the property, that's not to keep anybody out or in, but ultimately in time, it's to keep kids from the Rankin Trails project from finding their way into that multipurpose building, which that's what we don't want. And, you know, I know, we can stop it, but we can sure slow it down. And we've agreed, agreed to pay for half of that fence, whatever it works out to be. And we wanna put gates up there. Uh, we're actively working on an amphitheater on this property. Uh, we were talking to a promoter last night, and that promoter's got an act coming into South Haven up there, Kenny Chestnut, and he's bringing in 19 trailer loads of equipment and 16 RVs and everything else with all his people on it. So he's got 35 vehicles that he brings in. Well, if we do a big concert out there, we're gonna have to be working with the county to use that back parking lot and be able to navigate in and out of there with the road.
Where's the amphitheater going?
Uh, I don't have my Rankin Trails, it's about half a mile from this point.
Yeah, it's way off. I mean, say, 'cause there's no way you can put amphitheater behind here.
Uh, I'll bring back and share with, I'll share with you individually where that amphitheater's planned.
Yeah, well, originally, I, it was discussed y'all were gonna put it behind-
Right, it's not-
That was the original idea.
Yeah, I think Craig kinda thought that. Right, it's further away from, to the left of-
Is that the only time you've done that?
Yeah, I was like, how are you gonna put amphitheater under that power line back there?
If you stand at that point, uh, actually, the, if, if you stand at that point, at the back of the bar and look to your left across the water, right there, there's elevation, uh, it'll just butt that power line on the other side.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so that's B, and then to turn it over one more time, you can see that the problem with the road. What we're trying to do is create a road that goes between those two red dots. It's no more complicated than that. So that's with the path, with that one acre, and if you turn it over again, I created a path without the one acre, where we gotta go all the way out to the power line and come back around. No more complicated than that.
That's a two-lane road?
Yes, kinda, something like a state park road, that we can control with gates. So we're trying to connect the east and west sides of the property, or north and south, whichever way you'd like to look at it.
How wide are these roads? How wide is this road?
It will be about 30 feet.
30.
And we'll build it with limestone first and let that settle over time, and we'll come back and put curb and gutter and asphalt. So, that's it in a nutshell.
Butch, I just hate giving up the room there, you know, we've, well, this area you see back here that is cleared off, that's been cleared off in the last few years, you know, and, and if we go and give up this land, then we're committed, this is all we got. We have no other parking lines we can expand, this is all we got.
Or any other, any other, uh, pick-up area, parking lot, anything?
You know, I, I just, uh, I didn't, I thought it was too close, I wanted to give us a little more room to be able to operate on. That's, that was my issue with it.
Okay, I understand.
Well, like I said, the part on the right-hand side, you know, we're, it's not usable, like you said, there's nothing that we can do with it anyway, so I don't really have issue with that. I do want to leave a buffer, and I am concerned about, once y'all gonna clear all this out, you're gonna start pressuring us to get something done, you know, to clean it up and, and-
I think that's been pretty much done. Sheriff's done a wonderful job cleaning it up.
Well, I think, you know, we, we would like to sit down and, and discuss to see about maybe making a very attractive-looking fence all the way around it, you know, do a landscape project, um, but that's not something we've gotten to yet, you know?
I think, the reason why I talked to the mayor the other day, he talked, contacted me and, uh, from, now, correct me if I'm not, if I'm wrong, but you've already got a bulldozer on the ground or pretty much-
No, as soon as it dries out.
And you're, uh, starting on, uh-
That's exactly right.
You're starting on Shallow Park, if I'm not mistaken, and also-
Starting at Tennis Fur and Shallow to begin with, and gonna move right out there with every dollar we can get, you know, you rent those big dozers for a month, and we're gonna get every dollar we can out of it.
That's the reason why I wanted him to come here today to kind of present this, because, uh, while he's got the big machinery out there, he wanted to go ahead and, if we could get a, uh, uh, some kind of a, an agreement with that to allow them to keep on moving on theirs with the heavy equipment, so that's, you know, that's part of the process to try to get this, I know we've talked this thing for months, you know, trying to make a decision on this.
Actually, it came up at Christmas, but-
Well, it's really-
Look, Greg, if you got equipment out there, you got a lot to work, it's not like it's gonna.
Oh, yeah.
This right here is pending the equipment work.
Correct, as long as.
Can't move that fast.
No, but as long as we just talk about it, and I like, that's the reason why I wanted to see the mayor in front of us to give us his exact what they would like to see versus what we, the board, will be willing to negotiate on.
And I'm glad, I think he's got a great plan and is working his plan, but I think we as a board need to understand that we're need, about to have to spend some money, because we are about to have to fence this in.
Oh, yeah.
So, we need to decide what we're gonna do, how much money we're gonna put in it.
That's correct. Did we budget, did we put, I think we budgeted some of that.
Four fences across the front.
Sixty. And then they, and then I think the, Brandon has said they would put money in to help on all the fencing, correct?
Correct.
So.
Yeah, let me clarify one thing about that so that we're on the same page. I, I don't know that we've ever really reached any sort of consensus about the kind of fence.
Right.
We certainly haven't gotten clear in everyone's mind, the scale, that is, both the sizing, how tall it is.
It has to be eight foot.
And, and what it looks like, I don't know exactly. We haven't reached all those considerations. When I hear, uh, the possibility that there is a, the potential for a quote "nice" fence, that means different things to different people. And it may be that Brandon Alderman are thinking that a nice fence is something different than what we may ultimately decide on. So, I wanna be careful about a commitment to pay half. At some point, we're gonna need to sit down and talk specifically.
Right.
This is the kind of fence, uh, this is what we can, this is what we can pay toward that, both from our end and their end.
Right.
And, and try to reach a consensus. I think, uh, what I appreciate is that, uh, that the city is ready to participate in a fence project. Uh, but I just wanna kinda stay away from any specific numbers at this point.
Sure, I don't think, I don't think you'd wanna quite commit to that if you don't know what we're even talking about doing maybe. And we don't really know.
There's a couple of different things to think about too on a fence project. If you're going to do a landscaping plan in conjunction with a fence project, uh, I don't know that, uh, a, a, I, I don't know that it would be necessarily economically feasible to put a really nice fence up and then cover it up with landscaping.
Right.
If you're going to do a landscape project, you may want a utilitarian fence that has nice landscaping in front of it that, what you notice is the landscaping.
Right.
Well, and, and a lot of this is gonna depend on where it is. If it's at the entrance of the, the facility, it could be one type. If it's down the side that has a buffer, and, yeah, it could be a different type. I mean, it, and then it just depends on where it's, and the gates.
Control over the facility, right, with the chair having control of the thing with the facility, he may want to have an input on.
You got something you'll say about fence?
I've, I've had all kinds of, I've punched up done made, I'm gonna landscape the stone, the main interstate, the stone room, around the building and down there by the front. So, I'm gonna redo that, and I hate to cover all that up with a fence. I said move the fence, I'm, you know, maybe start it back, so I'm gonna put that whole front, I have tried to have it looking nice.
Well, what I was talking about a fence is an iron fence, you know, something like what they have.
I would think.
The way I had that set up on my day is, there's a ditch right there, so there's no way anybody can drive around if they don't.
Have you got a gate? You got the gates yet?
Oh, yeah, the gates are up.
No, I mean, you know, well, I think what we were talking about was, I think at one time we were talking about automatic.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, whatever. Right. Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, well, let's see there, right there, that throws a different.
The rest of it, though, the reason why I say the landscaping is cause we're gonna be stuck out there. It's gonna all be cut down, everything's gonna be flat out there, so all we're gonna see is the back end of our facility. I just would, I think eventually we're gonna have to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Right. Yeah, it could be several different types of fences, it's just according to where we wanna put the landscaping.
I mean, by us not giving you this back portion here, how much more is it gonna cost you to go and build the road?
Well, you see that zigzag go around these two mountains that are out there. I'm trying to go between them and run around them both.
Well, I'm trying to help you, but, and take care of myself, too.
I just hate to, I just hate to, to shut us.
Well, that's me.
Our potential room completely down.
I think as far as room, it's one point two-two acres is that small triangle. And it hadn't gotta be all at one point two-two acres. It's just enough to get around that corner to get between those mountains.
So, if you just went down that property line and then came down the property line, thirty feet, thirty feet.
I'm just trying to get around that mountain of limestone. If you just went down.
Well, see, that's why I was asking you, even on the part on the right side, why do you need everything that we have left, I guess you'd say?
I guess, some security to keep buffering there and to have access to both sides of that slough to clean it up.
Butch, let me, uh, come up this way for one second, let me ask you a question here, just to, because it may be something that, on this property line right here, where you could come something like this, is there any possible way, or how's that?
Yeah, it's just, it's a matter of just trying to get from over here to over here.
Okay, so, stay with the property line.
Between these two dots, that's all it is.
Stay with the property line.
Yeah, just follow the property lines.
Yeah, you go down, go down behind this parking lot, and there's a big space right there, you can see where that point is at.
So, we're not given.
So, without that, we're gonna have to come all the way around here to come around, come this way.
But what I'm saying is, if we follow the property lines, go straight through here.
We're gonna have to come around this red dot, this big mountain.
No, stay in front of it.
No, what he's saying, go right in front of it, Butch.
Yeah, and then cut in.
He's saying right here.
That's what I'm saying, instead of.
Go right through here, instead of all right out.
That's right.
Right out the back door.
As long as we can get to this point right here.
So, we can work that. So, that way we're not giving up as much, see what I'm saying?
I mean, if you didn't need it, that's just for number fifty feet to allow you to be able to come through there. That's, I think that's my point. Why, why do we guess, have to give up everything that's left so you can run through here?
You know, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I know, but that's the way it's coming across.
Comes straight across.
Proposed, that's what I'm saying.
Straight across here and.
See, if you couldn't, if you couldn't come right through here.
I went back to finish my survey, and I said, "Take that angle right here and cut it down to right here and right here." So, we can figure out enough room where we don't have to go down this here and come back around to come over here.
I see, I don't see why, you can't do this right, this point right here.
Right, well, you're going down fifteen feet, remember the elevation?
But this point's here already, you've already established that.
It's that, this point, this point's established. This is just me drawing the paper.
Okay, but if you're drawing on paper, this was your road right here.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out a way to get around this corner.
Alright, if you got around this corner, why can't you come right on up, right here?
Okay, that's more negotiating there.
Yeah, and then, then over here, I'm still confused if you're gonna take, you wanna clean this slough up, and you won't be able to get all the way around it. It's gonna be hard to leave a buffer there, you gotta get all the way around it.
The slough drains right here, so we just drain this thing, drain out of here and get in there. All this is gonna stay. So, if you wanna put it right up the middle of that and stop right here and come over, but up here, we can't get this road. We gotta be able to use that road and get over here, to get around this little line and to come this way.
What's wrong with this? That's what, I, I mean, I had, I had put the old pools up, but what?
About forty feet, that's water right here.
Okay, okay, I got it, I see.
Yeah, go this way. There you go, see the elevation line?
Right.
You're falling off a bluff. It's like these are those bluffs that are over here.
Right.
Don't forget about a fifteen feet elevation from this point to this point. So, you come out here to come around, to get back over here.
So, you'd have to come out here to come around?
Yeah, that road, if you go back to.
You'd have, means you'd have this bluff here.
See, there's the road right there. That road, we put up gates right here, and this is where we, I saw it down in my chair, right there.
Okay. That looked a lot better there, uh, Butch, that's, I think we can at least.
So, uh, to answer your question, though, we had to have property descriptions to bring to you, and the board attorney already has those definitively, next number of feet in each one of those triangles.
Yeah.
We've already done all that. So, that's all we're trying to do is get a road around it.
Now, would that need to be digged or right, right away, or what?
That'll be.
That'll be through the board attorney, that's correct.
Well, we would have to, if we wanna give up some land, I'm assuming the, the city would either buy it or make a deal to put in money toward a fence or something.
Right, and that's being worked out.
You ready to check with? Twenty-four seven.
Well, you know, I, I think, though, it could also benefit the city, too, is if you do leave us some more room back here, because we do have some hookups, and in the future, we could have, where we could have full hookups back there, you know, for more people coming in for ball fields, 'cause you're gonna need somewhere for them to stay.
Okay.
Yeah, it's true.
How much more?
Problem we ran into last night was if we build an amphitheater and bring a big act in, we don't have anywhere to go with twenty-five semis.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
I might, you, you.
I know, too, that's, that's the reason why I want that road and a gate back there, so we can go through that gate to do whatever we need to do.
That's what I'm saying, you're gonna need the use of some of this probably.
Yeah, there's no question about that.
But I don't, I think we needed to look on that back two acres.
Why don't we go out there? I mean, before, when all that, we discussed this, that's where we left it. We thought you were supposed to be getting with us to go out there and look at it and to see what we'd be okay with.
Be glad to meet you out there anytime, or your line, your line.
Not on a cold day.
Well, we'd be waiting till summer.
I have to work the cold all the time.
Sooner the better, though, because we aren't making decisions right now.
They are, they're making decisions. Alright, so what, uh?
I'm available.
I'm available. I've already walked it twice.
Can I just briefly summarize the, the discussion and suggest that maybe the action point at this point is to have the mayor go back and touch with the engineers, revisit the issue of one point two-two, and let's see if we can figure out exactly what is absolutely gotta happen out of that one point two-two.
Okay.
Uh, and, and get us a revised description of that document. Uh, we, we may want to fine-tune the, I just called it the five acre piece on the front end, the A parcel, we may wanna fine-tune that after Jared's comments about, you know, how much of that exactly is required versus what we might be able to look at squeezing that so that we don't get up to like this five acre or six acre, whatever it is. We may wanna look at that as well. And so, what if we got together, let you guys get together with the mayor to go and actually physically look at it, uh, give a revision of these two legal descriptions, and then come back as soon as we can and try to wrap a bow with this stuff.
Okay.
Okay, 'cause I, I'm, I'm looking right here, I don't know why you couldn't come right up the property line of the back two acres. I mean, you got a fifteen mile an hour, so it doesn't matter if you got a sharp curve. It's not like if you fly through there and hook around, just take the corner, the corner of the back two acres.
We discussed that a second ago, uh, Jared said.
Right.
Your engineers may need an easement for the purpose of the construction of the road, those kinds of things. That may be of some, that may be some of the thinking that went into the original one point two-two.
Okay.
Being able to work the road, maintain the road, that type of thing. We need to keep that in mind, that's part of it. So, maybe we can look at some of it being in fees, some of it being in easement, right of way, some of it being drainage, that type of thing. Uh, but anyway, we can cover all that out.
Okay.
If that's soon, as it relates to that particular part of the discussion, the active idea is that we need to relieve the cap on the amount of property.
Well, let's get this, uh, let's get this ready for, uh, within our next, uh, couple of weeks or so.
Our next, aren't we meeting the next couple of board meetings, yeah?
We'll have it ready.
Gotcha.
We'll be ready, and your next board meeting is when?
First.
First? I'll be ready.
First or, well, fifteenth, I think.
I'll have it to you before your board meeting, so you'll have time to review it.
Alright, we have a work session at twenty-nine.
Okay.
And perhaps we could, we could knew that and look at it at the work session and get all our discrepancies lined up.
And we all, it's not gonna be worth the ill beans unless we get to meet out there.
Well, not only that, we do have the photo op out there, so we can look at it all together at the same time, so, okay.
Get a different set of clothes on when you do the photo op and you do the walking.
Okay. You better be ready to get your boots.
Okay, we're gonna shift gears, and, uh, like I say, yesterday I talked to the Rankin County School District, and I put it this way, we're gonna talk specifically about generalities, or we're gonna talk general about specifics. You know, the discussion about building two new buildings in downtown Brandon, that's part of this discussion I'm gonna move into now. And the next couple of pages you see in there are some renderings of something I think we can do. Uh, this is gonna take cooperation between the school district, this board, and the city to achieve these things. We've got, and this is how it will benefit the county. Right now, all of your employees, when they come to work, anybody coming to Brandon to take care of any county business comes down Highway Eighty to get in front of this property. I suggest to you, you've got an opportunity to build some streets in the back, back here that go around the jail, and tie into, uh, what we know as College Street by Merchant Farmers Bank. And why this is a critical point in time right now is because Joe McGee is about to begin construction in March on four seventy-one, which will be a new five lane going up, up to the city limits. So, that'll encompass a new bridge on, uh, the interstate, fly over the bridge, over the railroad tracks, and we've got an opportunity to improve traffic in downtown Brandon with the schools, obviously. Cause of Felicity Street, the other side of that street is school district property. And, uh, this side of it, I believe, and where you potentially wanna put one of these buildings is on county property. So, we've got an, we've got an opportunity here to do something. So, I've got some general ideas. I'm not gonna spend any money on engineering until I know we have some commonality and thought. And if you would open up a couple of those pages, I'm looking at one now that says Group Two. On the right side of that page, you'll see something that says Group Two.
Yep.
And there's a potential for a road to go around from Highway Eighty all the way around up here to North College Street. We can extend Felicity Street to the north, basically building a new city block in there that would cross over, uh, North Street. That's a very real possibility. And it's kind of a game changer for us all, whether it's school district and for counties, all county businesses. Just envision, if you would, you're coming north on four seventy-one, you cross over the interstate, and you have the ability to turn left at a traffic signal, and come all the way down here behind any county building, or the potentiality of a new, uh, court building there behind Trust Mart in that area. So, that's kind of a general discussion that's going on. And I would say that that is a very real possibility. And we're willing to spend the engineering fees on this to discover this if you're receptive to it. So, I kinda need to know, you know, what your thoughts are. I don't expect a, an answer out of you right now, but I'd like you to digest on this a little bit. If you'll go to the next page, you'll find another street rendering. And this is, this one is a little bit more immediate. Uh, we don't need to know today, but I need to be in conversations with Joe McGee concerning this. If you go underneath the interstate, bottom right of that page, on North Street, and turn left on what we know as Lakeland Drive, I bet everybody in this room travels Lakeland Drive, and you recognize it as an unsafe street. Goes around and ties in at Brandon Cash and Carry. Where that new, on the left, you see the existing roadbed of four seventy-one, and you see the new roadbed of where that five lane is gonna go. I would suggest to you that we can tie into that roadbed and create a nice travel path to come in underneath the interstate, behind the jail, right there as well. Why this is a critical point in time to talk about this is, I understand there's somewhere between eight hundred and, uh, excuse me, eighty and a hundred thousand yards of spoil that Joe McGee trucking's gonna have to move out of that hill, which is on sixteen section property. Checking with them, if we're moving dirt on sixteen section property and it's not leaving sixteen section property, it's kind of a no-brainer. So, we can build, get the bed of a street built there, and then top it off with good dirt to build a road into the backside of Brandon coming in behind the jail here. So, I see that as a, a real winner for us all. We're creating travel routes out of the downtown and into downtown, and now's the time to do it. It's not a time to wait next year and think about it. The next page is another rendering, uh, kind of along the same words. I don't know that M. Doc would allow us to tie in where that first page was. This is called Group Three, and extend that road and tie in sort of where the old church was there on the corner of, uh, Lakeland where it strikes four seventy-one. And both of these, there are two big parcels there that are unleashed by the school district, and they appeared to be receptive to this. So, I'll let you interact with them, discuss it with Grumpy, or whoever else you wanna discuss it with. Uh, but again, we need to be talking to Joe McGee to give him some idea about where we wanna go with that spoil material to help get this roadbed started. So, we've got opportunities there, and I would like you to really consider this. Now, the, these drawings you see, I've got about a dozen more in downtown Brandon of where we're considering to work to start building new streets. We realize we've got problems with school district and county services growing, we're a growing county, glad to hear that. Sorry to bore everybody here with, uh, other mayor out here, but I can tell you Rankin County's continuing to grow. We had forty million in new home valuation construction in Brandon, uh, in two thousand fourteen, and still going. And, you know, you might think that, uh, somebody might giggle on your breath a little bit to wonder the thing between Pearl and Brandon and Flowood. I'm glad Flowood's booming, I'm glad things going on in Pearl. And I can also tell you, as far as the big tiff dollars that you just discussed, that, yes, our doors is being knocked off. And that same thing is about to happen in Brandon, and it's just a wonderful thing for Rankin County. So, we really need to think critically, right now, we're going through a new comprehensive plan, and we're planning on these roads and streets, and we'll build them as we can. I hope you like the, the lights out front, uh, that will lead to sidewalks and hopefully underground utilities one day. So, we care about what our downtown looks like, and we care about our county services that are here. So, we feel like we've got a stake in all of our future by how we represent Rankin County when people come into Brandon. And that's kinda what these new streets are about. So, those are conceptual things. Now, if you go on one more page, you'll find a rendering of Luckney, and where this ties into Luckney. This actual book I've got is missing one page, I don't know which one you're looking at. Well, there you go. Luckney Road, Luckney Road and four seventy-one. My understanding is that the roadbed from Luckney Road up four seventy-one is set to be complete by August. In other words, they're gonna be working on that road twenty-four hours a day. I don't know the reasons why M. Doc put those timelines on it. Then they'll fall back and begin to work on the bridges. However, Luckney Road is a state aid road. This end of Luckney Road has never been improved, and it's a state aid road, and it needs to be improved. So, I'm speaking on behalf of the city of Brandon and all of us that travel Luckney Road going back and forth to Flowood. I'm speaking to all the people that live on Luckney Road, because it's unsafe, and what I would propose to you is, we have an opportunity right now to improve seven tenths of a mile, it's eight tenths of a mile from Luckney Road to the city limits, one tenth of that, or one fraction of that, it's already gonna be redone when they do four seventy-one, so we've got seven tenths of a mile, if we can find some money to work on Luckney Road to improve it so that it matches the other end of Luckney Road. So there's a safe connector road between four seventy-one and Highway twenty-five, I think it's a critical connector, and it's only gonna be traveled more when this highway project is complete. Bike paths and pedestrian paths are a big thing right now, the, the reality is, if we do this North Street thing in downtown, and you like the idea of building new streets in downtown Brandon, you'd be able to get on a bicycle or run from the monument here in downtown Brandon underneath the interstate, cross over Highway four seventy-one, go down the hill, we'll take, we're already gonna take over the old roadbed, it's gonna be named Depot Street, to Luckney Road, and then a bike path crossing over twenty-five, up to Spillway Road, you just open up everything with a good corridor back and forth, and it, it's a critical piece of our future, and I would ask that you seriously consider that. Now, funding, how do you get the, the money to do that? You know, I understand that the county's gotten one point two, one point three, one point four, and according to Mr. Baker, there's another eight hundred, nine hundred thousand coming from the, what they did in the legislature last year, so I think you've got somewhere around two million plus unallocated to a project, and I would propose to you, if you would dedicate that to improving Luckney Road, that we will, will pay for everything else, if it's a right-of-way acquisition, if it's utilities, moving utilities, we'll handle all that in the city, because it's ever been in the city, to improve that roadway, so we'll approach it as an improvement, uh, just like you, you worked with us on the, the project that's about to start here, down here on Lewis Wilson and Tricklebridge Road, same thing, we'll do a curb and gutter project, we'll make it a, a nice avenue that connects Brandon and Flowood.
What worse is two million dollars coming from?
Uh, you've already been allocated one point three, I think, of state aid money that came to Rankin County from the state aid project?
Oh, we done spent that, that's being spent right now on Highway forty-three and forty, oh, forty-nine.
No, that, what you're talking about is an LSRP project, this would have to be a state aid project.
So where's this eight hundred thousand at?
Well, what I've been discussing with state aid, uh, we do have, we do have.
Glad to have y'all, Mayor.
Do what? We did have some additional money come in.
Oh, this is what you and Dale told us about a month ago, where y'all were gonna plan some roads.
And we need to extend our overlay project because we had some state aid issues where we have to, the county has to maintain the state aid roads, that's the reason we have to do annual inspections, we're gonna have to know when it's coming up here probably another month, based on what they're telling you. But, what I was talking to state aid about as far as Luckney Road is concerned, is that supposedly, there's a legislature that's going to be some more money come, and we were gonna program a project on Luckney Road for that, first thing you have to do is state aid program a project, well, I don't even know what the limits are right now, I don't know how much is gonna be coming off of four seventy-one and anything else, but I can even program a project, but that is kind of where we're going with the, the money as we see it, and, uh.
I thought we just overlaid Luckney.
No, we, we overlaid Luckney up to the city limits of Brandon.
Right, so what are you talking about state aid about Luckney Road?
We're using maintenance money there, see, and, and you can't go in and, and spend maintenance money on part of a state aid road that hadn't been upgraded and improved.
Correct.
And this little section, why in the past, I have no word for that, it would never have been upgraded.
So that's what you're talking about, is finishing it out?
Yes.
All the way to four seventy-one?
This is showing a, a bike trail, multi-purpose trail, all the way up though.
I believe we can achieve it.
Huh?
I believe we can achieve it.
Well, not with that kinda money.
No, no, so.
And so basically, are you trying to extend state aid all the way to four seventy-one?
It is already a state aid road.
See, it's on the state aid system.
But it stops at the city limits?
Correct.
It stops, no, it.
No, it comes all the way to four seventy-one already, and it's just never been improved.
The part that's on the system, the part that's been improved stopped short of four seventy-one, and like I said, I don't know why that, I think back and here.
At the city limits.
That's where it stopped.
Right.
The improvement stopped.
Where the improvement stopped.
I was gonna say, but why they stopped it there, I don't know.
But in the system, it is a state aid all the way to four seventy-one.
Well, yeah, there's a lot of them that are state aid, that, but you can't do certain things to them until they have these certain improvements, which.
Which is what?
We talk about all the time.
We can't use overlay money.
Correct. Which is what the, I think, which is, I think is what Brandon is wanting to basically work together with the, the county to be able to put together a plan to make sure that this does get improved.
Right, but so what I'm saying, though, some, correct me, but I think if I'm, some of it can't be used on certain things until, it's what's gonna make sense, until it has these improvements like a shoulder, for instance.
Yeah, that's it.
And it doesn't make any sense because it can't be used for construction, reconstruction, it has to be used for basically maintenance, uh, 'cause I know because I've, we've had some other roads that we thought, man, these are the, where it needs to be, but because they didn't meet the criteria that state aid required, we couldn't use it on them, and, and one reason, one thing was, there were no shoulders, and you think, well, how do I gonna get shoulders if we can't use the money to reconstruct it? So anyway, that's just some things that to look at, I understand what you're saying.
And depending on this money, if it comes about, it depends on whether they send it Rankin County's portion, whether they send it as SAP money or LSP money.
It's good to learn we're planning on doing that.
But LS, when they send LSP money, there's only two things you can do, spend on a bridge or you can spend it on local roads, just like our existing LSRP project, that was LSP money, 'cause that bridge is in good shape. Now, if it comes as state aid money, then you really can't spend state aid money, I love you spend it on something that's on your route to upgrade it.
Right.
That's, that's what it's, a little complicated, but you know, I can understand.
Yeah, we start all those RPs and SRP's and LPSs.
Yes.
What is the distance between the city limits of Flowood and the city limits of Brandon on that road, any idea? They don't meet, we don't meet there, do we?
No, we've got a county piece on it, just.
A county piece, Henderson Road that comes in.
Right.
To Pearl, my backside, all that's been improved.
Y'all go all the way now.
But it's been improved by, just been overlaid.
No, whole road, Henderson Road, the whole road.
Henderson, no, I thought you were talking about Luckney.
Yeah.
The whole Luckney Road.
No, but we're.
The only portion that hadn't been improved is the portion in the city, and that was annexed in two thousand and seven.
If you know where the two churches are on Luckney going north towards Flowood, there's a Methodist church on the left, there's a non-nominational church on the right.
Right.
They're very close, uh, that is within a hundred feet of the city limits of Brandon. That piece right there, where it leaves the city limits, is county, it's county all the way to Henderson.
Then Flowood picks up at Henderson?
Correct.
So that portion there, are y'all gonna go meet?
Yeah, we want to meet, we want people traveling and shopping.
No, no, are you gonna move the city limits on out?
Not in the foreseeable future.
So, I've never understood personally why we only asphalted all the way to the portion, you know?
Well, he may have answered your question of, of money going on.
Going on Luckney, why, why it really stops where it.
Right.
Money came from?
Because you can't spend overlay money on a state aid road, or road that's on the state aid system that hadn't been improved.
See what I'm saying, all those, I mean, there's so many.
Okay, so let's, let's get to the chase then, how do we improve it to be able to spend that money then? How do we do this?
Well, it's been overlaid, we overlaid it before, how did we do it then?
First thing that needs to, that needs to happen, and we've requested it, haven't yet, is I need to see a set of four seventy-one planes.
Correct.
And go and keep working on them.
Right.
And see how far that project is coming up, Luckney Road.
Correct.
Then that will establish our limit on that end, and then we can work, and the next step is, we put together a program for state aid to do the work.
Okay.
And then once that program is approved, then we can go to work designing the road.
Well, when I was at, yesterday, well, no, but we, this, a lot of this stuff we're doing, should, we could do it, we have work session materials, I'll tell you about like, go ahead.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for your time, I know it's getting long, Wood, I'd like to come back and talk about Luckney Road, maybe we'll know a few more details about that project during that work session, that good for you?
Can you get?
No, I mean, I, yeah, I mean, I don't need, I'm just talking some things I heard, learned at the conference, midwinter conference.
Oh, Mayor, what I'd like, I need to get from you, if, if possible, from the four seventy-one project, to get into Buster's hand, a map of where, how far that's going to come up, so we can actually start a workup.
I think I'll have those for you, sir.
That'll help the, uh, move the project.
Well, it's good to know we were planning that anyways, since it's first I heard about it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank y'all for what you did.
Okay, let me fold this up and.
Okay.
Craig, was that the last piece you got in your? On your section, okay, we've got Ms. Laura Oster, county administrator. I know you are.
You need to drink a water or something before you start talking, I mean, you're worn down, I know.
Actually, it was a late, late evening for the county depositors, what I'd like for you to consider before we do that is, on the, just the yield from the bank gets, we have this C three, one from Trustmark, one from Five Nation, one from Priority One, after the meeting was over, I went back to my desk, in my inbox, I had an envelope from, in our office from Jessica, that had another depository bid in it. It did come in time for the bid opening, but because it was addressed to Tension Larry, Jessica had sent it to him, so did he at my time, he has to have to open, so we have not, I've not opened it, what I'd like for y'all to do is allow us to open it out and just consider it as one of the bids.
Yeah, I think as long as it got in in time and stuff, I think that's amazing.
It's dated.
It did, he just did not.
Right, right.
We need a motion that states an acknowledgement of the depository bid, that the depository bid was received in accordance with the bid requirements, and that, that you're making that finding on the record.
Okay.
That Ms. Laura did authorize to open that bid and consider what is in that bid.
As far as I know, none of us have even heard what the numbers were on the bids.
On the others, I think.
To begin with, so that's not been publicized, they, there's.
Right, we haven't, I didn't disclose that that day, we just hoped and took it under advisement.
Okay, so do we need to add that item to the?
That we are going to acknowledge that Bank Plus bid was received on time and that yielded.
Okay, let's add that item to the agenda, if I have a motion to entertain a motion on that.
I'll make a motion, add it up.
Motion by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Okay, do I have a motion to accept, uh?
A motion to, to make a finding on the record that the Bank Plus depository bid was received in accordance with the bid requirements.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on that.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Okay. Based upon all that, okay, all the information.
Mr. President, while we're waiting on Ms. Laura to review that, I've got one item here that we would like to further the board to consider adding to the agenda, this is a request from a constituent whose payment, uh, this came through the justice court, payment on a fine was made, the payment was applied improperly, not to the correct count, so it left this individual with the appearance that they had not paid their fine, you know, the rest of the story.
Yes.
Uh, so the request is for a reimbursement to, um, Ms. Betty Lorraine Martin Berry, uh, of a hundred and seventy-two dollars, which is the amount of the fine that she paid, uh, we are not going to act today on the, um, on the, of, of, of an additional request that goes with that, where there is a claim that the remittance of a, she paid a second check with tolls, uh, they told her, you hadn't paid, she paid a, she paid two times, so we're refunding the second payment that she made. We understand that she is later going to claim, we think, that that second payment put her in overdraft, so we've got additional work that we're gonna be looking at on that, but this would be for reimbursement of a hundred and seventy-two dollars, so I would ask that you consider adding this item to the agenda.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Morrison. Second by Mr. Johnson, add this item to the agenda, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
It would be authority of, uh, the justice court to issue the reimbursement. Okay, she said, so we're gonna issue out, the county administrator to issue a check in the amount of a hundred and seventy-two dollars to Betty Lorraine Martin Berry as reimbursement for an overpayment on a fine.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept this?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Keith, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Are we ready to proceed on?
I'd like to take this under advisement until we come back this afternoon and after recess.
Okay.
Good.
All right. So do we need a motion on that at all? Okay.
No.
Got you. All right, any?
Make most recess to one o'clock today.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison to recess until one o'clock this afternoon, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
This meeting was supposed to be shorter than the one this afternoon.
Well, all this stuff.